Good evening. This is the special meeting of the Pinole Planning Commission on October 7th, 2024. I'm going to begin the meeting by reading through the standard notices, including how to connect to or attend the meeting and submit comments. You can attend in person at the Pinole City Council Chambers, 2131 Pear Street, or attend via Zoom teleconference. You can submit public comments in person by attending meeting at the council chambers, filling out a yellow public comment card, submitting it to staff, or via Zoom. You can submit a live remote public comment via Zoom video conferencing. You can download that app from the Apple App Store or Google Play. The hyperlink to join it from a computer or computing phone is And the webinar ID is 86505375301. You can also join by phone by dialing 1-669-900-6833, or 1-253-215-8782, or 1-346-248-7799. Speakers will be asked to provide their name and city of residence, although providing this is not required for participation. Each speaker will be afforded up to five minutes to speak. Speakers will be muted until their opportunity to provide public comment. When I open the comment period for the item you wish to speak on, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if connecting via telephone, which will alert staff that you have a comment to provide and press star six to unmute. To comment with your video enabled, please let the city clerk know you would like to turn your camera on once you are called to speak. If you would like to submit a rain comment, please submit public comments to planning staff before the meeting via email to dhannham@ci.pinole.ca.us. Please include your full name, city of residence, and agenda item you are commenting on. You can also watch this meeting live on Channel 26, where there will be retail cast the following week. And you can find the Community TV Channel 26 schedule on the city's website at www.pinoe.gov. It's also video streamed live on the city's website, www.pinoe.gov, and will remain archived on the site for five years. If none of those options are available to you or you need assistance with public comment, please contact Planning Manager David Hanham at 510-724-8912, or dhannham@pinole.gov. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, if you need special assistance to participate in a city meeting or you need a copy of the agenda or the agenda packet in appropriate alternative format, please contact the city clerk's office at 510-724-8928. Notification at least 48 hours prior to the meeting or time when services are needed will assist the city staff in assuring that reasonable arrangements can be made to provide accessibility to the meeting or service. Staff reports are available for inspection on the city website at www.pinoe.gov. You may also contact the city clerk via email at hbll@pinole.gov. Says in participation. Persons wishing to speak on an item listed on the agenda may do so when the chair asks for comments in favor of or in opposition to the item under consideration. After all of those persons wishing to speak have done so, the hearing will be closed and the matter will be discussed amongst the commission prior to rendering a decision. Any person may appeal an action of the planning commission or of the planning manager by filing an appeal with the city clerk in writing within 10 days of such action. Following a public hearing, the city council may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning commission, and the planning commission may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning manager. The cost to appeal a decision is $500 and a minimum $2,500 deposit fee. Note: If you challenge a decision of the commission regarding a project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in writing delivered to the city of Pinole at or prior to the public hearing. Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Section 54950. In enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, boards, and councils of the other public agencies of this state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. I now call the meeting to order. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We then have our land acknowledgement. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloney land, the land that Pinole sits upon their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Roll call. Mr. Hanham, if you could provide it, please.
Commissioner Hury?
Present.
Commissioner Uch?
Present.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Present.
Commissioner Liam Julian?
Present.
Commissioner Bender?
Present.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Present.
Let the record show that all the planning commissioners are present, so we can, we have a quorum, we can take action on the items in tonight's agenda. Thank you.
And myself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman Minnis?
Present.
All right, let the record show that we're unanimously all here, and we can take action on all of our, all the actions we have for tonight. Thank you.
You probably take that as given, but yes. And I'd like to make my usual ex parte notification that I sent out an email to my mailing list about the various contents of this agenda prior to this meeting. All right, says it's to be heard. The public may address the planning commission on items that are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning commissioners may discuss the matter brought to bear attention, but by state law, the Ralph M. Brown Act, action must be deferred to a future meeting. The time allowed is five minutes each. Do we have any persons wishing to speak under says it's to be heard?
Yes, we do, Chair. We have the caller with the phone number ending in 5748. Caller, when you're ready, please press star six to unmute, and you may speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Anthony Wasspring. And I'm calling on behalf of myself and several members of the general public with regard to the the severe extreme heat wave issues we've been facing over the last week, week and a half in our county and specifically in Pinole with heat over 90 to 101 degrees today and past days for the period of time. And I'm asking again, as we have in the past for several years, as well as others, why hasn't the city of Pinole stepped up to the plate and officialized the city local library, if not the senior center, as a cooling station? Official certified cooling station? And that would also maybe include a freestanding power generator for people that are compromised, that have to have breathing machines, et cetera, to service the whole community, seniors and their pets as well. We don't have anything like that. We put in a call to Federal Glover's office in the county. No one has called us back. And it would be bad if somebody passed out or died on the city of Pinole's watch because they couldn't figure out a way to staff the library for an extra few hours, or the senior center for an extra few hours, because they're closed on Saturdays, Sundays, and Mondays, and have limited hours there, they're only four or five o'clock in the afternoon. And they should have cooling station hours from approximately 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning and go through seven or eight o'clock at night, even if it involves some staffing by city hall staffers, interns, volunteers, whatever it takes. I'll be the first to volunteer for my three or four hour shift. Does anybody else from the city want to step up to the plate? Also, I would like to ask why. I hadn't, we didn't get an answer back yet, and maybe you can tell us tonight a couple things why, why and who authorized those over a dozen and a half no parking street sign poles that had been drilled down into our sidewalks and bolted down up and down either side of Pinole Valley Road from the Trader Joe Shopping Center up to the high school across by the library, all the way down to the, past the 7-Eleven store, to the Arco Station. We have red curbs there. They've been enforced for the last 30, 40 years, as I recall. And, and so who authorized that? Why did they authorize that without any public discussion? Via the city council, via the tax committee commission, et cetera? As well as, you know, they can't even afford to do that, or actually turn lights on up and down those streets that are still out. We have numerous light, uh, streetlight outages up and down Pinole Valley Road and signs in the media strips that have been destroyed over the last few years that the city has totally neglected on Pinole Valley Road to restore anyway. So our new city manager, with the help of a city council and maybe a brand new city council person or two, as well as the mayor, needs to step up for the public before election date and make some kind of commitment to the, to the general public with regard to that. Also, I would like to mention that
You have 40 seconds remaining?
There's been a lot of complaints with people speeding up and down Pinole Valley Road, primarily on either side and through Old Town. And why haven't we seen more police citations being given there? And I know it's not your department, but I think people have to hear this. And it should be an issue, whether it's election year or not. Certain people, like the police department, have to be held accountable and whoever they report to, to give more citations for people speeding in a 25 mile an hour zone. They're going 35, 65 miles an hour, 24/7, like Indianapolis Speedway
Go ahead and wrap up your sentence, please.
on San Pablo Avenue. And they're not, and you can check the last several police blotters over the last several months. They give more citations up and down, maybe Pinole Valley Road and a few more or less on Fitzgerald Drive, but very little, if anything, on San Pablo Avenue. They just do warnings, stops, and so on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
No, there are no other comments at this time.
All right, so, Mr. Hanham, are there any answers that city staff can give to Mr. Wasspring's questions or comments about, I guess, the streetlights speeding on either Pinole Valley Road or San Pablo? And how the city is handling cooling centers? I believe those were the core points.
Yeah, in terms of the cooling centers, I'm not quite sure how those are established or when they establish, or if the city has different policies of when temperatures reach such and such a temperature that then they open the, open the areas. That's something that the city council would have to leave, or the Director of Public Works would have to answer on that, on how they, on how they get those started. We, I know, I'm not sure that none, either the library or the senior center has been considered a cooling zone. I know in the past, just in the recent past, we've used the senior center a couple of times for a cooling center, probably in the last couple of years. But I don't, I'm not sure of the policy that we use to declare that being open. Or how it's staffed, or that, that's all done through, that's all done through Public Works. In terms of the public, no public parking signs and red curbs on PVR, Pinole Valley Road, I'll have to take a look at that. That, I'm not sure how the signs, I don't know how new the signs are, if they're relatively new, or if they've been there for, for years, and it's just, we're not quite sure, they just went up. So I'll have to check with, with Public Works. It could be that if, if it has been red curbed for years and years and years, sometimes what happens is now there needs a requirement to be a sign being placed, as well as the red curb showing the, that there's no parking there. So it wouldn't necessarily be an action of the council. The council already took action that those areas would be red curbed as part of the, as part of the program. So the signs were probably just added as part of a safety measure. But I can check with Director Mishra to make sure that's kind of what happened, so, on that one. In terms of the people speeding, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get a message out to PD to let them know that we, we heard Mr. Wasspring's complaint, and we'll, you know, let them know that it came up and see what they, they do about it. But in terms of policing, I'm not quite sure what they're, you know, what they do out there. So, but I'll check with Chief Avery and, and, yeah, Chief Avery and Commander Cronin, Crone, to make sure, to let them know that that's becoming an issue. The streetlights, you know, so, like I said, some of those are, some of those are PG&Es. That I'm, I still am not really getting an answer on who does what and when and who's replacing them, but it's my understanding that the lights that are out aren't ours. So that's something that, but I can check again with, with Public Works Director Mishra and get an answer on that and get those fixed, so.
All right, sounds like we've got a bunch of stuff for you to have a look at with Director Mishra this time around, then. All right, so I guess there's no other public comments. We're going to move on to the planning commission meeting minutes for September 9th, 2024. Do any of the commissioners have any modifications they would like to make to the minutes? All right, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
I think Commissioner Hury was faster on that one. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
As you may, Commissioner Hury?
Yes.
Commissioner Uch?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yes.
Commissioner Liam Julian?
Yes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Chairman Minnis?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. And with that, we may move on. I guess I should briefly ask whether there are any public comments on the minutes, though usually there are not. And we're now moving on to new business, a presentation on Measure I. So I'll hand it over to Director Guillory, it looks like, tonight.
Yes. So, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I am Markeisha Guillory. I'm the city's finance director, for those of you who I have not met. And tonight, I'm going to provide some information on Pinole's municipal election and the city's half-cent sales tax measure, Measure I. So it'll be a brief presentation, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Next slide. So just a bit of background on how we arrived at this point of placing the sales tax measure So just a bit of background on how we arrived at this point of placing the sales tax measure on the ballot for the November twenty twenty-four election. Um, the city of Pinot, like many other public agencies, um, are facing some fiscal challenges. And when the city prepared its twenty-year financial forecast last year around this, this same time, a study was provided to the city council to consider a number of revenue enhancement options. Those also included a sales tax measure, which is, um, what the, the city council decided to go with by a vote to place it on the ballot for this coming, upcoming election. And what the, the twenty-year financial forecast revealed is that Pinot is facing an annual deficit that is projected to grow to one point six million dollars in the next fiscal year. And that's fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And unless a reliable source of local funding is identified, the city, the city would have no choice but to make some severe cuts in a number of city essential services, including public safety, as well as local streets and roads repairing maintenance, um, park maintenance and other essential cities, city services. And so this is in response to that, to, um, in an effort to address, address that deficit and, um, to plan for long-term fiscal sustainability within the city. Next slide. The city engaged a consulting firm, um, in the spring of twenty twenty-four to conduct some public outreach and polling in an effort to identify the community's priorities um, for the, the budget and how we plan and put together our, our financial plan each year, the budget. Um, and as I've mentioned, just working toward the long-term strategies of maintaining fiscal sustainability, we wanted to gauge what the community's top priorities are. Next slide. And what the results of the polling revealed is that these were the top six, uh, priorities for the community collectively. That included providing clean water, maintaining nine-one-one emergency response times, keeping public areas and parks healthy, safe and clean for the community, keeping funds local. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Maintaining fire protection and response, and also maintaining crime prevention programs. Next slide. So looking at those a little bit closer, as I mentioned, of course, um, safety is always one of the top priorities for any community. Residents do wish to keep Pinot safe and that includes maintaining neighborhood police patrols, continuing to invest in crime prevention pro, crime prevention programs and maintain response times, um, at a time when other parts of the Bay Area are struggling with rising crime, especially in property, property-related crime. Next slide. Another high priority for Pinot residents is streets and roads repair and maintenance. And according to a study conducted by independent engineers, Pinot has at least, uh, thirty-two million dollars in road and infrastructure repairs. Um, so there is a backlog there and so a portion of this funding could be used to leverage financing options to address those needs. Um, and then it just should be noted that the longer roads go without repair, the more expensive it will be to fix, uh, down the road. Next slide. So what is Measure I? After receiving feedback from hundreds of city residents through the polling that was conducted last spring, the Pinot City Council voted unanimously to post, to place Measure I on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four municipal election ballot. If this measure is passed by the voters, it would establish a half-cent sales tax, which is a local sales tax, meaning that the funding would remain in Pinot. This would help to improve the city's long-term fiscal sustainability, that it would fund essential services. And all funds generated by Measure I will be spent on maintaining core city services, including those high priority areas, um, such as public safety and maintaining streets and roads. Next slide. So here is the official ballot question that will appear in the, uh, ballots. And again, it, it lists out those, um, high priority areas that the funding would be used to fund. We estimate that the half-cent sales tax will generate approximately two point five million dollars annually to the city's general fund. It will require annual audits, so it would be included in the annual year-end audits on the city's finances. It will include spending disclosure to make sure that we are spending according, according to what was in the ballot language. And all fun, funds will be spent for Pinot. Next slide. So as I mentioned, there's a local control and accountability aspects to this measure. All Measure I funding is subject to the city's accountability, accountability provisions and that includes reporting to the city council and to the public on how the funds are spent. And it would be included in the annual independent financial audits for accountability. Um, all Measure I funds can only be used for the benefit of Pinot and none can be taken by the state as it is a local sales tax. Next slide. So there are a number of other items on Pinot's municipal election ballot. So in addition to Measure I, Pinot voter, voters can also select the city treasurer and two at-large city council representatives. So the city does encourage you to make informed decisions on other propositions, such as state propositions, regional and state candidates. And if you need to register to vote, here's some information on where to go to do so. This is also on the city's website. There's also additional information on Pinot's municipal election as a whole, as well as Measure I. Next slide. And again, visiting the, the website, there's a special webpage that is there. And we just want to encourage and thank everyone for participating in the upcoming election. And with that, I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Guillory. So I guess before we begin, there's sort of, one sort of framing question I should ask. Because we're convened here as officials of the city, what sorts of questions and statements are we allowed to ask or not ask? Because I know that we don't have as much liberty as, say, somebody of the audience would.
So I don't have a, a general, um, answer for that. There is information that is provided to commissioners, to staff, to elected officials regarding the do's and don'ts. I don't know if you're asking for that answer right now or if you're asking if there's a, a resource that you all can refer to, such as when you're, um, in public or?
No, no, I'm just asking in, in the context of this conversation because I want to make sure none of us accidentally step over a line or anything like that.
It, it really has to be more of the technical informational types of, of questions.
Okay. So with that, I'll go ahead and start going through my fellow commissioners for their questions. We'll wait on doing comments and statements until after a general public's had a chance to make their questions, comments and statements. Starting with, uh, Commissioner Bender.
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Uch?
No questions.
Commissioner Huey?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Director Guillory, for your presentation. Um, the question, one question that I did have is that, do you have a projected breakdown of where these funds would go or is that to be decided by the council later on?
Yes, it would be decided and it's usually through the budget development process.
Okay, so they would just kind of like, more funds would kind of be available to them and then they would kind of just, um, disseminate those funds as where they, as needed?
Yes, allocated to the various areas, specifically those that are mentioned in this presentation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Be all for me.
Commissioner Lamb Julian?
Uh, just a quick question. Um, can you, is this the last time that Pinot would be able to increase the sales tax?
Yes. It, it would be, I mean, other than, the city would have to go through a process, um, through the state to be approved if we were to, um, present another sales tax similar to this one in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Good evening. Uh, Director Guillory. I just wanted to first say a huge, uh, thanks to you. Under your leadership and your steadfast hand and great, um, ability to work with numbers, I've seen a remarkable improvement in the transparency of our numbers and the buckets where our sales tax come in. And I'd like to just say thank you for doing such a phenomenal job for our city. Sometimes it may seem like it goes unnoticed, but for those of us that are actually paying attention and have lived here thirty years to see what we had prior to your arrival and now under your leadership, I just, I owe you a huge thank you. And if you don't hear it from the community enough, I'm sure everybody out there is thanking you as well for all of your good work.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
So, um, I guess what, um, where I'd like to go is, uh, I'm really glad that we're looking at a sales tax increase. Um, I know there's some concerns in the community for it and it looks like we're trying to get ahead by you coming to Planning Commission and rolling this out to us. Um, I do hope that we're going to hold additional community workshops to also introduce this or maybe at farmers markets, start making the community aware of what you just brought forth to us. So that's part, that's one part of this is how are we messaging out, um, to the greater community about this? So that's kind of a big important question is, um, if we can get some idea of the scale of rollout of this, that would be helpful. Not sure that you can answer it, but that's just one question that comes up. And then secondly, one thing that came up to me, um, is if we are looking forward to, uh, trying to ask the citizens for more money in terms of a sales tax, I think we, it would behoove us to have a very, very detailed plan. And the example being when we look at the, the slide on the streets, the streets folks in Old Town, it's called caking. That's where the roads are breaking up into little squares. That basically means these roads are past end of life, they're ruined. There's nothing left. So if there were an action plan to say, hey, we, we, we really should probably put a plan together to go after the worst offenders being our caking streets in Old Town and then, you know, put another action plan behind it. But if we're going to ask for things from the community, we should have a plan saying, this is the plan. If we, if you can approve this, our roads will be first. This is how we're going, our attack plan, we're going to do roads first and then behind that, we're going to work on enhancements to whatever it is. The senior center, which is one of our most used buildings in the city of Pinot. Those types of things, because I think if people can see and understand what those dollars are that they're asking, that we're asking them for and we could show them specifically what the plan is, that might help them to better understand and get behind and help us with this. Okay? So I don't know that you have any part in that, but if you could share that with the various, um, executives at your levels here at city hall and, and share that with them, it would be really helpful and greatly appreciated.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
And I also have some praise for your Director Guillory, but I'm going to save that until we get to the segment with statements. In regards to some of Vice Chair Martinez's questions, I know that the city's done multiple different studies on the city's streets and what it would take to repair them. And part of the problem is, and the reason why the city's basically been prioritizing fixing streets in better condition over streets in worse condition is because the cost of fixing any given segment of street increases non-literally as its condition decays. So a street that's caking and needs to be torn down to the roots and rebuilt costs about as much as it would take to crack seal like ten times that level of that quantity of mileage. So that's a major factor to consider too. We could say, let's prioritize this money for the very most damaged streets, but then you're not going to get anywhere near as much out of it. Which is part of why having funding for ongoing maintenance is also important, but that's getting more into comments. Let's see, with regards to questions. I think a couple of times you've mentioned that the funds would be allocated as described in basically the measure's description. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the sales tax is a general tax. So the council would have the power to allocate it, allocate it in any way wished, including in ways other than as the measure describes. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
I don't think they would. I think that would be a terrible idea, but I think it's important for people to be aware because that's
Yes.
part of the difference in threshold of fifty percent plus one or sixty-six point seven percent plus one, is that it's not locked in to any one particular use. If there's a crisis and the city needs to reallocate that money, it can do that.
Yes.
Let's see. Other questions? Will a presentation similar to this one be given at the workshop that's going to be held tomorrow at the senior center?
Yes.
And let's see. Sort of following up on Vice Chair Martinez's question, to what extent can city staff do things like going to farmers markets and advocating directly for this measure as opposed to giving information about it like this presentation? Is that something that city staff are permitted to do?
Information, yes. Advocacy, no. Can't advocate at all.
All right. So, and then I guess sort of, one more sort of indirect question. How do you basically find the line between information and advocacy?
Um, so just presenting the financial condition, some of the information that I provided in the presentation on how we got to this point, um, we looked at the various revenue enhancement measures, the, the various options. Um, and again, how we got to this, how much it can generate, um, the accountability to the, the voters and to the public on how the funds are spent, those types of, of things.
All right. I think that's all my questions for the moment. Thank you, Director Guillory.
You're welcome.
And now, are there any comments from the public on this item?
Um, I don't see any hands raised for this item right now.
All right. Then I'll bring it back to the commission and I'll go ahead and go the other way this time. And this is for comments as well as questions at this point. So Commissioner Sandoval, do you have any comments on this item?
Um, yes, I did. Um, kind of bouncing off what, um, some of the commissioners had mentioned earlier. Um, from my understanding, the city of Pinot would actually not be able to increase the sales tax after this um, due to state law. Um, the city had actually worked to get legislation passed. So there actually is an exemption for the city of Pinot, um, to increase its, its, its sales tax above the, what the state allows, if I'm correct.
The cap, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted to give a little bit of clarification on that. That would be all for me.
Commissioner Leo Julian, any comments? All right. Commissioner Bender, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Uch, any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Huey, any comments?
None.
Vice Chair Martinez, any comments?
No further comments, thank you.
All right. And now it's time for my comments. So at this point, I'd like to echo, uh, Vice Chair Martinez's earlier comments, praising you, Director Guillory, for the work that you've done to make the budgets more clear. I've personally gone back and looked at some of the past budgets, you know, going back to twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, before you joined the city's finance staff and they are much, much more difficult to read than the work you've done. The work you've done to put in graphs so it's accessible and easy for people to get at the information, the work that you've done to break down information, the type of graphical work that you've done so stuff is legible and easy to read and accessible. I think that's all really great work and the city's well-deserving of the awards it's gotten in that category. There's a lot of data there, yeah, but you've also done a lot of work to make it as accessible as you can, given, you know, the limitations of what you're required to say and how you're required to say it. I guess, let's see. I'm not sure I permit it to state in my personal capacity, my opinion on the measure?
You are.
All right, then. In my personal capacity, speaking as Rafael Menas, citizen, I approve of Measure I. I think that it's necessary for the city to be able to have those funds. I just wanted to be clear about that because some of the comments I made about it being a general tax might imply that, you know, I don't approve of it. So I want to be abundantly clear on that point. I'm not going to shift over to advocacy, but because that would be inappropriate, just want to state my stance clearly there. Let's see, were there any other comments that I had? Let's see, were there any other comments that I had? I guess this is sort, I guess this is sort of a combination question and comment. The slide on safety said that other parts of the Bay Area are struggling with rising crime. Does the city have data on crime rates in Pinole and changes in those rates and how they compare to surrounding jurisdictions?
We could get that information from the police department.
I think that might be helpful to have and to add to the presentation, just because it would be useful to have, you know, numbers to make the comparison more concrete. And, I believe that's all the comments I can make without crossing over the line and taking advocacy, so I'll conclude there. Does staff have any comments on this item? Plan Manager Hanam?
I have no comments on this item.
Mr. Shu, any comments?
No comments.
All right, do any commissioners have any comments they want to make that they haven't brought up already? All right, well, since this is a presentation, there's no action for the commission to take on this item, so I guess we'll just, again, thank you Director Gilory for your time in putting this presentation together and delivering it to us. Thank you.
Thank you for having me, and thanks for your feedback. Good evening.
All right, and with that, we are now moving on to our public hearing. Let me check the time to make sure that we are still within the permitted time range for that. The time is currently 7:44 PM Pacific Daylight Time, so it is before 11:00 PM. At the beginning of a public hearing item, I will read the description of that item as stated on the agenda. The city staff will then give a brief presentation of the proposed project, the commission may then ask staff questions about the item. For those items listed as public hearings, the chair will open the public hearing and ask the applicant if they wish to make a presentation. Those persons in favor of the project will then be given an opportunity to speak, followed by those who are opposed to the project, the applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. The pub, public hearing will then be closed, and the commission may discuss the item amongst themselves and ask questions of staff. The commission will then vote to approve, deny, approve in a modified form, or continue the matter to a later date for a decision. The chair will announce the commission's decision and advise the audience of the appeal procedure. No public hearings will begin after 11:00 PM. Items still remaining on the agenda after 11:00 PM will be held over to the next meeting. This item is a conditional use permit UP 24-01, radiology office at 825 San Pablo Avenue. So, I believe the presentation tonight is actually from Justin Shu, Commission Planner, so if you could give this presentation, please.
Great, thank you Chair Menas. If we could go to the next slide. Great, so just want to thank the plan commissioners here for your consideration of this item. The proposal being brought before you is for a medical office located at 825 San Pablo Avenue. The office would provide radiology services. So for a little bit of background, 825 San Pablo Avenue contains an existing building already, with a parking lot in, at the front of the site. The parcel is located in the general plan designation MUSA, this is mixed-use subarea. Its specific plan land use designation is CMU, and it's located in the mixed-use subarea of the San Pablo Avenue corridor in the specific plan. As mentioned, the proposal is to establish a medical office, providing radiology services within the existing building, with minimal modifications to the site and building. And, to establish such a use, a conditional use permit is required, a CUP, for medical services general, which the project is proposing. If we could go to the next slide. The use is being proposed by Joel Cho, he's the owner of the site, and he'll be available later for questions as well. If you have any questions about operations or the project, his architect is also available on the call for any questions about the design that's being proposed. The project is making some minimal changes to the existing building of the site. It's to accommodate a medical office, which would provide radiology services, including MRIs, CT scans, ultrasounds, and X-rays. The proposed use would operate during fairly typical business hours, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays, and on Saturdays by appointment only. The projected, the project would use the existing building on the site, with some modifications to the exterior, not resulting in any expansion of floor area. So among those changes include removing the roll-up door that's existing on the site, as well as the side entry on Meadow Avenue, and to make improvements after those removals, so that the exterior of the building would be, have a consistent exterior finish. Additional modifications are being made as well. The site is located at the corner of San Pablo Avenue and Meadow Avenue. On the Meadow Avenue side, there is an unused curb cut at the side of the building, which would be removed and then redesigned, so it would be level sidewalk all the way across. An update would also likely be made at the existing driveway into the parking lot. This was a Public Works comment to bring the driveway to current standards as needed, so they'll do some further review on that as well, but that's also included as a condition of approval. So for the building itself, most of the changes are going to be at the interior of the building, so they'll be reusing the inside of the building, with some minor expansions to the second floor area to increase some of that office space, but also just additional space for electrical equipment and other equipment that would be used on the site. So, the building is essentially being renovated on the inside to be able to accommodate this new use. If we could go to the next slide. The project is reviewed for consistency with a number of different city policy documents, including the general plan, specific plan, as well as the zoning code for any applicable development standards. For the general plan, this is the general plan land use designation of mixed-use subarea, Musa. So, the intent of the mixed-use subarea includes all types of commercial and residential uses, as either single use or in combination with other allowable commercial and residential uses, at densities and intensities that support transit service. Another description of Musa includes, including a range of retail activity for neighborhood convenience stores and shopping centers, to regionally oriented specialty stores and office uses, including administrative, professional, medical, and dental offices. So that's kind of the vision for what should be in Musa in terms of land uses. The project appears to be compatible with envisioned uses in Musa, as a medical office and providing additional commercial services to the area. The project is also consistent with general plan policies, including LU 1.1, LU 7.1, and LU 7.2. If we could go to the next slide. The proposal is reviewed for specific plan consistency as well, since the site is located within the San Pablo Avenue corridor of the three corridor specific plan. For the mixed-use subarea in the San Pablo Avenue corridor, the vision for this area is that it would serve as a bridge connecting historic Old Town and the service subarea. The service subarea essentially is the area across the street, you might know that as the Pinole Shore's development. It's those parcels and everything to the west, to the western city limit essentially. So that area is considered the service subarea, so the portion that this site is located on is the portion of the corridor that would connect that area with the Old Town area. And so, some of those envisioned uses for Musa, the mixed-use subarea within the specific plan, is to provide for a mix of uses, including low-density residential, multifamily residential, professional office, and service commercial, as these will play a vital role in fulfilling the vision. So, the specific designation for this site, the zoning designation, is CMU, commercial mixed use. This designation, the purpose of this designation is to allow for designation that, for properties that would be commercial and mixed use. It provides for integration of retail and service commercial uses with office and residential uses as well. So, the proposal as a medical office would fit this description, the project would also contribute to the diversity of commercial services that would be available in the corridor and in the city, and provides for supplemental medical services in Pinole. If we could go to the next slide. The project was reviewed for applicable zoning consistency, since there essentially isn't any expansion of the building, some of the development standards being reviewed are, have been considered, include the parking standard for the site, the general parking standard for the size of this building, and for the use, is one per two hundred fifty square feet. I did want to note, there's a correction in the staff report, it noted seventeen spaces as the standard, and it's actually, sorry, staff report noted thirteen spaces, it should actually be seventeen spaces, based on the square footage of the building. Nonetheless, the parking on the site does meet the standards, as the site does provide for eighteen parking spaces. Additionally, the site currently does not have bicycle parking, from what we could see, so as a condition of approval, and as provided in the site plan, two bicycle parking spaces would also be provided on-site. Two were noted in the plan set that was submitted, but they'll be reviewed for a further conformance with standards when they submit their building permit application. Things that would be reviewed or include, just, you know, ensuring that they're designed according to standards, including that they're securely anchored, and that they're solid constructions that allow for six-foot bicycles. If we could go to the next slide. The project was evaluated based on SEQA guidelines, the pro, this type of project would be categorically exempt from SEQA, under Section 15301, this is for existing facilities, Class One. Class One includes projects that include a little to no expansion of the existing structure, since this project includes construction alterations, mostly in the interior of the building, as well as making minor exterior modifications that don't result in any expansion, this would apply for this project. If we could go to the next slide. So, Plan Commission, in your deliberations and consideration of the project, would consider four different findings to consider whether the project should be approved, approved with conditions, or denied. Staff has done some preliminary review of the project as well, and the staff review assessment is also provided in the staff report. So I'll just briefly go over each of these findings. The first finding is the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and applicable portions, and any applicable specific plans, and all applicable provisions of this title. This title refers to the zoning code. So, as described previously in the presentation and in the staff report, staff finds that the project is consistent with the general plan, specific plan, and the zoning code, as discussed. For B, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, including location, size, design, and operating characteristics, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such use, or to the general welfare of the city. And, based on the staff review, the project includes occupying existing space on the site, resulting in no substantial changes to the current site development or configuration. The project would contribute improvements to the public right-of-way, including the sidewalk and driveways, to ensure they're developed to current standards, as required by the Public Works Department. The use would be operated as a medical office, providing services to residents, and would operate during typical business hours, including weekdays and some Saturday appointments as necessary, and the project meets the parking requirements on the site. In terms of C, the site of the proposed use is physically suitable for the type, density, and intensity of the use, and related structures being proposed. From the site review, the site contains an existing two-story building with a parking lot in front, which could accommodate both the employees working on the site, which is estimated to be seven to ten at peak, as well as visitors coming to, for services. The project meets the applicable zoning requirements of the proposed use, and similar types of uses like this, such as professional offices and commercial services, are uses that would be permitted by right in the same zoning district. In terms of D, it will not be contrary to the specific intent clauses, development regulations, or performance standards established for the zoning district in which it is located, the proposed use and related structures are compatible with other land uses, transportation, and service facilities in the area. So, as described previously, the project is consistent with the applicable general plan, specific plan, and zoning code provisions. The project does not result in any expansion of the existing building footprint, and would meet applicable development standards. The proposed use, it would be compatible with the surrounding land uses in the vicinity, as it's among a scattering of other commercial services along the San Pablo Avenue corridor. The site is located in proximity to residential uses, but the operation is occurring during daytime hours to minimize any potential conflicts. The site is also located adjacent to bus stop certified West Cat, as well as across the street from another West Cat bus stop, and the project would also provide some bicycle parking, which allows for alternative modes of transportation to the site. If we could go to the next slide. So, staff's recommendation is to consider adoption of Resolution 24-06, approving UP 24-01, which is a conditional use permit application, allowing for the establishment of the medical office at 825 San Pablo Avenue. Next slide. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff's is available for any questions, and we also have the owner, as well as the architect on the call as well.
Thank you, let's see. So, we'll begin with commission questions to staff about the item, so these aren't questions to applicant, yeah, just questions to staff. And we'll start with Commissioner Sandoval this time, do you have any questions to staff on this item?
Yes, thank you. One question I did have was about bicycle parking. You said that per, per the city, only two space parking spaces, bicycle parking spaces are required?
Yes, based on the size of the building and the type of use, a minimum of two is required. The applicant can provide more, but we, we can only require two.
Okay. That was my only question.
All right, Commissioner Lamb Julian, any questions for staff?
Yes. Yes, sir, since this property is close to a residential area, will the developers be reaching out to the community there prior to construction to just let them know what is happening? Just understanding that the residential area behind it is compact, to say it in a different way, and that they have, community members have expressed concern over increasing traffic issues, and just the, yeah, the uptick of traffic conditions there, and folks passing through, that they are quite alarmed. Just, what does that look like to communicate to those community members there?
Yeah, although it's not a standard requirement, if they do submit a building permit application, that's a ministerial process, so if they meet all the standards, they're issued their building permit. However, if you feel that there is an issue in the area, and you wanted to add a condition of approval, we could do that as well for the owner or, you know, contractor, whoever, to provide some notice to neighbors before construction starts.
Okay. Yeah.
And also, just remember that most of the construction will be on the interior of the building, the only, the only, based on the report, the only exterior is for the curb cutters and sidewalks, so to repair those, and to redo the driveways and that, so actually improve the area a little bit with the new sidewalks and stuff, so am I right with that, Justin?
Yeah, it would be sidewalk improvements, driveway improvements, and some of the exterior of the building, they'll be resurfacing.
Right, resurfacing, but they're not expanding the building?
No.
Right, so, this is all, just to share, the building's pretty much the same building that it was when it was the engineer's building, so.
Yeah, and to Commissioner Lamb Julian's point, the owner and architect are on the call as well, so that could be a question you could pose to them, but if you wanted to propose an additional condition, we could consider that as well during later deliberations.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Bender, any questions for staff?
No questions.
Commissioner Ouch, any questions for staff?
Hi, yes, I have actually a question to the, about the design on the ground floor of the building, yes, sorry, to the architect, question to the architect. So, what I noticed on the first floor of the revised space, I see an area of the restroom that's right behind the reception, and I'm curious, right next to the toilet, is that a sink or a urinal? Because it's hard to tell what it is, and I'm just curious of like, if that's a urinal or a sink. or a sink? Because I think it's important to know, especially for a, for a medical office, to have a place to be, be able to wash your hands.
Okay. Yeah, it does appear to be a sink, but I think the designer could clarify that later during questions.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hui, any questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you. Medical equipment, especially radiology medical equipment, are high-energy utilizers. And of course, more energy used means more greenhouse emissions that are being emitted. And when I think about a radiology practice, you know, I think about like CT scans, and for example, a CT scan can produce nine kilograms of carbon per scan. This, in the spirit of social math, translates to approximately equivalent to, depending on the car, 20 miles of you driving. So I have three interrelated questions here. The first one is, do we know if the applicant is a certified green business under the California Green Business Network? If not, would we be able to provide that information to the applicant? Of course, not to enforce or demand anything, but rather just for simple communication and education. And then building off of that question, do we already provide that information about the California Green Business Network certification, especially since we have one here in Contra Costa counties whenever businesses interface with the city?
Great. Thank you for the questions. I'm not aware if they are certified green business, but they could probably clarify that during questions. For your question about whether we provide information about the green certification, I'm not aware of the Community Development Department providing that, but if there is information you'd like to share with the department, we could definitely put that information out there.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Vice Chair Martinez, any questions for staff?
Yes, I did have a few questions. I guess, just starting with the exterior of the building, previously under, since it was built, if I remember correctly, this particular location was always an architectural firm that had been in there from the inception. And when I look at how we're migrating now to a healthcare facility, I welcome that. I think we'll probably see more business there than we ever did before. The parking lot has always seemed rather empty, which is sad because it's such a nice building. But it's in that migration that we're moving toward where my questions come in, because now we're talking about a healthcare facility. And the last time we had a radiation office here in Pinole was off of Apean where the old doctor's hospital was, and that had closed well over 10 years ago. So bringing back a business like that to Pinole is always welcome, right? But it's in that change that we need to be very careful. Currently in the design, just try to draw it, if you will, in the center of the building, planning manager Hannah and Justin, we've got a large square area that's cut out in the very center of it, and it's flat right against the wall. And there's a little bit of an indentation, I'm not sure, because I haven't really walked up to the building, but it's not very much of a covered area. And so what I'm concerned about is if it's a healthcare building, I think, as most healthcare buildings do have, I think it should be a cover that at least covers right to the sidewalk. So we do need to talk with the architect and see if we can get that, not just the front enclosure covered, but also an extrude, a covered patio area that goes over the sidewalk. So that's one modification I think we need to do with it being a healthcare facility. And I say that with the highest level of respect because we're going to have individuals that maybe are waiting on Westcat to come pick them up, or a car share service, or a family member. And if they're going to be waiting, they need to have somewhere that's somewhat protected from the elements. And not only that, but they should also have benches in those areas so that folks can sit and wait outside, because that lobby area is not very big. So, let's see. We also, that building's looking a little as though it needs a bit of a refresh, so we should probably at this time look at some new colors, so a new exterior paint job on it. And then the trees need trimming, we need to improve the landscaping, it's looking rather dead, and there's a lot of dirt showing, a couple of plants here and there, so we need to see that. And then going back to that front area, I do believe that we should, at this time, ask the building owner to designate the first two stalls in front of those doors as loading-only spots for the cars that are picking up and doing all that stuff with the folks visiting. And then the last part, I guess, that I'd like to see in potential conditions of approval is to look at, if we take a step back and we look at the work we've done with SAHA. SAHA, as we know, did not have enough parking for the residents. I think this is a good opportunity for us to partner with the two organizations, SAHA and the new building owner, to say, okay, after 6 o'clock at night, can you come up with a parking permit and sell it to the SAHA person and let them rent from you parking from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, seven days a week? And then that way, we're not going to see a whole bunch of cars on the streets, they'll actually have a safe, secure area to park their vehicles. And it may only be one or two, but at least that's a better way of us managing the situation where we know we were forced, in the case of SAHA, to put a lot of folks in an area without a whole lot of parking. And that would just be a couple 20, 30 extra steps to go over there. So those would be the conditions of approval that I feel are very important to this project. And I'd like to see if we can ask of staff and the developer and the building owner to add those enhancements as we look forward to bringing them and their business to Pinole. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Vice Chair Martinez. I'll just break it, bring up a few points, and then there's probably room for future discussions later during your deliberations. So in terms of the improvements you mentioned, like the covering and the benches, the architect is here, and he could, you could probably discuss with him whether that would be possible. And if it would help you make your findings of approval as well, if it's connected to those findings, and we could include a condition of approval for those elements. In terms of designating a loading space, the project is already pretty close to where the parking minimums are. It's one space over, like what the otherwise required minimum would be. So it might be possible to designate one spot as a loading spot, but maybe not two. The other thing to consider is, since they are fixing out part of the sidewalks to remove a curb cut, that also like provides an additional parking space on the street as well. So that could be an additional option as well that's included in this project. In terms of SAHA parking, I don't know if we could require them to, you know, do a shared parking agreement with SAHA, but you might bring a good point that the owner might consider reaching out to SAHA because there is this opportunity. It might not necessarily be a condition of approval that they have to, you know, work out a shared parking agreement, but maybe between the private parties, that could be something they consider. So thank you for bringing that up.
All right. And now on to my questions. At least some of them are going to be for the applicants, so I'm not going to raise them quite just yet, but I think at least some of the questions are going to tie into staff. So heading on over to the conditions of approval. Starting with condition number four on page number 37 of the agenda packet, page, page 37 of the agenda packet, page one of five of the conditions of approval for site maintenance. And looks like this is mostly talking about the exterior of the site, you know, clearing ways to debris, making sure there's no graffiti, that sort of thing. Given the nature of some of the equipment on this site, would it be possible to create a condition of approval requiring the proper maintenance and plan of basically there being a proper replacement plan for the material as it reaches its end of life, given, you know, some of the risks associated with that equipment?
Yeah, I think if it's related to the use that's being proposed here, that could be something that's considered. The owner might have more information on what that might entail or what that might look like for your consideration. So that might be a question to pose to him, what, what some of that might entail.
Fair enough. And I know that there's not going to be, you know, loose radioactive elements.
Right.
Or anything like that, but I think it is important to consider the overall condition of the machines as they age and the plan to replace them as they age out of use or safety. And then on page number four out of five of the conditions of approval, page number 40 out of 49 of the agenda packet, it seems like a lot of the conditions of condition number 10, construction activity, might not apply. Like, for example, I don't think there's going to be a grading operation here because it's purely interior work. I don't think there's likely to be very many of any newly disturbed soil surfaces or excavated material or the like. So are those items just in there because they're, you know, sort of general elements and they're there just for convenience, or is there a reason that they're there?
Yeah, more or less. They are standard conditions. They are proposing some work on the sidewalk, which might include some grading, and possibly some work at the driveway entry, which might include a little bit of grading. So this also kind of helps capture that in case there is some work involved.
Okay. That's a question about design, so it's for the applicant. I guess this is also probably a question for staff. I know that right across from the street, we've got the whole Pinole Shores one segment, and that that particular area had constraints on its uses, I forget the proper terminology, due to lead contamination of the soils of the site. Does this site have any similar risks?
No, we don't have any information on that.
I figured a probably one, because it's far enough away, but that's not likely. But given that one of the constraints on that area is, you know, no hospitals in Pinole Shores one, I figure it's worth mentioning. And I know this is not technically a hospital, it's a general medical office, but it's starting to get closer to that category. All right. I think the remainder of my questions are probably questions for the applicant, so I'll hold on to them for now. So at this point, I will now open the public hearing, and I will ask the applicant if they wish to make a presentation.
Okay, great. They're joining as panelists now, so they'll be able to unmute themselves when they're ready to present and answer questions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joel Cho. I'm the owner, the new owner of the building.
Hi, my name is Hyonee. I'm the architect for the project.
And Mr. Cho, if you, yeah, if, if you wanted to make a presentation, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, you could note that you're available for any questions the commissioners may have.
I didn't have a formal presentation, but it is a, is an outpatient diagnostic facility center, and we do provide MRI, CAT scans, x-rays, and ultrasounds. And really, the only radiation modalities there are, they're going to be the x-ray unit and the CT unit. Some of the questions and concerns you had in terms of the validity of the equipment, all equipment, we're governed by the California Department of Health, so they do audits and inspections of the machine on an annual or biannual basis. And so there's always, they're, they're to observe and to maintain, make sure that we have the proper software, the latest requirements in terms of maintaining, that the public is in good protection when it comes to these types of tests and studies. So that comprises of the manufacturer providing maintenance every month, especially for the CT scan and the MRI units. Other than that, if you're familiar with Hilltop, I have a current office there that's providing the same type of services currently.
You have anything else you want to present before we move on to our questions for, or wait, actually, no. We don't ask you questions yet. It would be persons in favor, persons against rebuttal, and then the commission would get to ask questions of applicant. Got to make sure we follow the right order. So before I open it up to the public more generally for their questions and comments, do you have anything else you want to add to your presentation? Mr. Cho?
No, I don't think so. Considered a mini hospital that just does diagnostics. If you were to go get a chest x-ray or an MRI that you hurt your knee or something like that, you need to get diagnosed.
All right. I'm now going to open up the public hearing to the public. Persons in favor of the project may speak, followed by those who are opposed to the project. Mr. Xu, do we have any public comments on this item?
There's no one online right now.
All right. I'll give it, I'll say, 10 seconds, just in case somebody wants to hop on at this exact Are there any persons online?
No.
All right. In that case, given that there was no commentary against the project, there's no need for the applicant to provide a rebuttal. I will now close the public hearing. And the commission may discuss the item among themselves and ask questions of staff, and I believe now also the applicant. So going in the other direction this time, Commissioner Bender, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant on this item?
No questions.
Commissioner Ouch?
No questions.
Commissioner Hui?
No questions.
Commissioner Sandoval?
No questions.
Commissioner Lamb Julian?
Just a quick question. What is the estimated timeline for construction?
Well, this would be my fourth project, and so it ranges, really depending on how long the permits come out, takes to come out, and then identifying the right construction team to take on the project. I've had projects go from as simple as six months to a year and a half, depending on how efficient the contractor is.
Okay. Thank you. I'm complete.
Can I add one more thing?
Go ahead.
Okay. Basically, we do have to increase the power capacity into the building. Currently, it has a 200 ampere service line, which is like less than half what we needed. So it depends also PGN is the process, how long it takes.
Yes, we've definitely had our own encounters with specific gas and electric here at the city of Pinole, so I think we can sympathize. Vice Chair Martinez, any questions?
No questions. Well, I guess there may be some questions that I have, and it's relating to those modifications on the front for the covered area for that loading zone, because that would need some type of engineering modifications to accommodate that. So I guess we'll, we'll work through that, or maybe that could be sent over to the subcommittee at some point. But I hope there's an understanding of why I'm asking for this. As somebody that has used your facility before, and it is a beautiful facility at Richmond Hilltop, and thank you for providing that for those of us that need it in the community, I have found myself oftentimes outside waiting on the ride-share company. So this, when I speak to this particular point, it's because I've So this, when I speak to this particular point, it's because I've, in fact, used the service, and I know that it was a bit of a pain point, because even with the Richmond Hilltop, I had to wait outside for the car share service, and of course, it was outside uncovered. So just because of the logistics of that particular building where you're in, I think you understand there's multiple doors, and people get confused on which door you're at with the rideshare company. So it's having lived through this that I think we could do a little bit better this time around, and why I'm asking for these modifications. So I hope you can understand that, and with that, if you're, you would be willing or in agreement to working with us on that, I greatly appreciate it. So I'm not sure where you're at with that, but I just wanted to ask that of you and give you the information behind that. Thank you.
I appreciate your concern regarding that, and we will try to provide the most convenient access to and from the building for patients that use the rideshare service or taxi to come from and after the appointments.
I guess to follow up on Vice Chair Martinez's question a bit, would the waiting area have sufficient seating available in it for people after their appointments to wait within it for a ride share or whatever? Or will it only be adequately sized to hold people who are waiting for their appointments to start and not afterwards?
The current situation is that I'm planning to do it kind of in a step-by-step process, because I'm just going to incorporate an x-ray unit and a second MRI unit in there. The planned design is to have two MRI units at a future date. I currently have a lease that goes for the next three to four years at the Richmond office, and the plan is to renegotiate, and hopefully, the landlord will financially kind of work with me to keep that location, since I've been there for such a long time. If not, that's what I'm referring to as a transition state, where then I would close that facility down and move the, that MRI into this location. But in the current setup, depending on how long construction takes, you would have one MRI unit in there and an x-ray unit. So in the current situation, we wouldn't have too much foot traffic in terms of walk-in basis other than the x-ray unit. And that would be, if I related to the Richmond office, maybe one or two patients within a thirty-minute period, because we currently have open walk-in x-ray hours from ten o'clock until four o'clock. And then all the other modalities are on appointment basis, and an MRI would take anywhere from thirty to forty minutes to complete. And typically, if they do have current rideshare requirements, whether it's done through the VA or Uber or Lyft, they usually time that with my front desk staff to have them arrive at the time when their, when their studies would be completed. So there isn't really too much of a conflict in my situation currently with the people that use rideshare services to get to their appointments, because if they are coming for an x-ray, they usually drive themselves, they come in, they finish, and they leave. If they do need a rideshare service, they would, because we could get them in within a fifteen-minute period, in and out, sometimes the taxi would wait, sometimes the Uber would wait. So it's really difficult at this stage how much waiting time is required, where somebody would actually be sitting in the, in our waiting room, waiting for a ride to come. Typically, right now, it doesn't really happen.
All right, so Vice Chair Martinez, do you have any other questions or comments?
I do. And it's, and I share this just as a user of the product, is that in your current configuration, there's the atrium, and then your office is off to the side. And I understand that the Richmond location is a much larger location than what you're looking for, Pinole. But having been through the experience, I have had to wait in that atrium, because it's all, it, what I have experienced is, maybe it's a family member bringing their elderly parent, so it's maybe one or two, or maybe they also have a child with them. So those seats quickly get taken. And in my experience in using the service, I found myself oftentimes waiting in the atrium for my appointment. So that's where it's, the seating is a little bit tight, I understand that, but I've also experienced where there are longer waiting times, and we might want to, again, have that covered area where folks, if they can't get into the seating area, have somewhere to hang out, if you will, maybe put benches out front or some, something of that nature that affords the flexibility of the space.
Sure. I, I do understand that. I'm just trying to picture in my head how we would keep an area where we designated as a waiting area outside the building, especially during the winter season, too, when it does rain and is chilly outside. It might be difficult there, too uncomfortable for patients to sit out there waiting, but, and plus, we have one entrance in this building setup. So I guess I would have to defer to Mr. Lee, my architect, to see if it's even possible to design something where traffic, footsteps, you know, could be, I guess, routed or somehow not to disrupt patients also trying to enter into the building, the building to get their test done.
Okay, I can continue that one then. All I see the building is that we have a four feet recess from the face of the building to cover it. So if you want us to provide some kind of more coverage to the building for the future traffic, we can extend the, like, just like either earning or trailer's style at the entrance level. And currently, the walkway is not quite wide enough. We only have around four to, like, less than five feet, just minimum provided by the original building design. So in order to provide for the, like, seating or covered area, it's just better to be next to the, like, if you see from the side plan, it's actually left side when you see in the front. So that is a little bit of a covered area. It has, like, trash enclosure. There's a small, like, landscaping area, which has a most available area. If the other section is the front side of the middle avenue, but this is falling to outside of the property, so that will be a little bit of a, like, a legal issue might come. So only available area will be the left side with, you know, the little bit earning we can provide it. I see, that's all I can think of. So the current three parking layout, we don't have a whole lot of, like, options, provide some open space. We have to just come up with something what we, is available. So that is only left side of the building we can think of.
Okay, so if I understand, the indented area that's currently just open from the first floor all the way up to the second floor, you could, there is potentially some type of a design that you could come up with, where you would cover that second part and close it, and then perhaps add an awning on the front, and then maybe add a couple of seats on that indented area for, I don't know if it's four feet or five feet, if there could be seating that's added in there, even if it's just one or two seats on each side, to allow for additional seating on the exterior of the building. Is that something that you would be agreeable to?
If that's possible, and probably the regarding for the exterior, either earning or trailer's design, we have to, I think, work with the planner. So we just don't provide, okay, here is what we did, but we will work with the planner. So what is fit to the outside, and then, you know, it doesn't stand out too much as our work design.
Excellent, thank you. Those were the questions I had. Thank you.
All right, so I've got one question that's probably pretty simple to resolve, just looking at page forty-eight or forty-nine, the sheet AS two dot one for the proposed floor plan. I'm assuming that the, basically, the layout of the walls around the various equipment and how it's laid out and all that meets the necessary state standards, so that everything's adequately shielded, there's the appropriate distances, and all of that's set up the way it needs to be, because that's a little bit unclear just looking at this chart. I assume it probably is, but I figure it's also worth asking.
Okay, that, that one I can answer. Basically, the size was redesigned, the recommendation of the manufacturer's specification, such as full MRI suite, we need to have a minimum twenty-six feet by fifteen feet, something like that. So that does not include our shielding, the thickness of the wall. They are talking about clear requirement of the space for the usage. So the design representing all those be covered.
Great. And then, let's see, I guess the other question I had, and this is going to a different page in the site plans, I think this one is... The prior page, actually, AS two point oh, or page number forty-seven out of forty-nine, looking at the demolition floor plans. It looks like you're going to be taking out some full-height walls from the ground floor, and a fair number of walls, just generally from the ground floor.
That one I can explain. Current building is, it, it looks like two-story building, but only the second floor section is between grid line A and C. That section is the only one second floor. And then full-height wall is the one between D and E and grid line three. Other than that, all those walls are just not the full-height wall, it's low height, like, low-height partition walls. So basically, full-height wall, which is not affecting any of our design, because that section we are taking out, that is for the, for MRI suite, which we will be having the little bit higher ceiling area.
Okay, so there's no structural implications to removing that wall that's been accounted for in the design?
No, sir.
Okay, just wanted to check on that. So you mentioned that at the present time, you're only planning to have one of the MRI suites be occupied. How do you plan to use the other space? Because right now, we're just seeing it as if there's going to be an MRI machine in both of those spaces.
Primarily, we're, we're planning to build it out in terms of shielding the room in preparation for delivery and installation at a later date. But in the current situation, we're probably just using it as necessary storage if it's required.
Goodness knows, the demand for storage never ceases. So on page, the last page of the document, AS three dot one, page forty-nine of forty-nine, I noticed that not only were you patching the roll-up door, but you're also, I think, removing an entire door on the west elevation. Is that just because you only want to have one entrance to the building?
That's right. The other one is that that door was a previous office, looks like accessible from the exterior. But for our configuration, that will be part of the x-ray room, which door cannot be used. And also, the x-ray window is not useful for our, the usage of the space. And then that is not indented, it's just flush with the existing wall line. So I don't think it would affect too much. Also, somehow, that section is the one we need to repair for curb cut, which is not used. So mine as well, when we fix the curb cut, we fix the exterior, get rid of the, unused the door and window, and make the same as, just like other area wall.
That makes sense. And I guess, following up on an earlier question, since I'm not sure we've addressed that yet, I think it was Vice Chair Martinez that raised the idea of potentially refresh of the exterior design as part of renovating the interior. Would that fall within sort of the scope of work of this project?
Yes, because there's currently graffiti on the backside that probably you wouldn't be aware of, but there is. We will be repainting the whole exterior.
Right. And then I guess, sort of redirecting back to Vice Chair Martinez, did you have any particular ideas for, like, specific scour schemes or anything like that, or you just want an overall refresh in terms of the standard maintenance requirements?
Thank you for asking, Chair Martinez. I guess maybe we would be open to maybe a new color refresh, whatever you feel would be appropriate for your building, being in the healthcare business, or maybe colors that are more soothing than others. That's not my line of work, so I would defer to you and your architect to give us perhaps some ideas on what you'd like. But yes, and then I guess one other thing that I would be open to seeing also is the addition of trash cans, because as you have folks going in and out of the building, someone might have a coffee cup or a soda can, right? It's always a good idea, if we're changing the look and feel of a building, to include those receptacles, to give folks the ability to properly dispose of their, their trash. So that might be a good idea to look into, including a couple of those in this project as well, please. Thank you.
I guess it's also possible that there might be trash cans that simply aren't shown on this diagram, because it's more showing core structural elements. Would that be accurate to say, that, you know, there are going to be some trash cans, for example, in the reception, the waiting area inside some of the areas where, you know, you'd expect there to be trash cans, like the toilet and so on? Or are there only trash cans where they're marked?
Agreed. I, I agree, and probably will recommend also that we do place an exterior trash can at the entry point, so that patients have, do have a place to discard their newspapers or coffee cups prior to the exam.
Excellent. Great. All right, I think... That covers my questions to the applicant. It sounds like a lot of the concerns I might have are already covered by the state rules and regulations, and therefore, outside of our jurisdiction anyway, so don't need to worry about that. And for the concerns that I do have, it looks like they've been considered and accounted for already in the various architectural plans, and changes can be made to adjust for the conditions concerns. So I guess this is maybe more a question for staff. The installation of that awning and seating in the front area between segments D and C in the chart, would that be the sort of thing that would be a condition of approval, or is that just something that we notice, having been discussed?
It, it could be either. If you would like to see it as a condition of approval, we could include that in there. The plans, of course, would be reviewed again once they're finalized during the building permit submittal phase. So depending on how, how much you want to see the new awning, we could bring it to the planning commission subcommittee as well for review, or we could, or we could just have it be included in the building permit submittal plan set. So that's up to commission consideration.
Vice Chair Martinez, since you're the one pushing for the awning, what's your opinion?
I guess I would like to see it just added as a condition of approval from city staff, just to make sure that we tweak it as best possible to make it work for the community to accomplish the goal that I was asking for, which is shelter that mean entry area a little bit more for folks that are waiting outside of the facility, please.
Okay. Just for clarification, is the condition for staff consideration of the new awning, or did you want to bring it to the subcommittee for? new awning, or did you want to bring it to the Subcommittee for review first?
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Shu. I would like that to go, if possible, to the Subcommittee, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, as a condition of approval, how specific will we need to be? Will we need to say at least X many chairs, an awning of at least X height, and so on and so forth, or do we just say improvements as indicated by a discussion of the Planning Commission to go for the relevant Subcommittee wants planned?
Yeah, it could be general. If you wanted to provide the applicant with some leeway and some discussion on the exact look of it, you can, yeah, the condition is to bring the plans back to the Planning Commission Subcommittee for inclusion of the awning and seating, as mentioned, prior to the submittal of a building permit application.
Excellent. I would be very happy with that. Because I don't know whether that indention is five feet, six feet, or three, I have no idea. So we would need to look to the applicant to make the best recommendation for their, for that particular area.
I mean, if the lines of the plan sets are accurate, if we look back at... One of the earlier ones, I think it's... AS 1.0, page number 46, you can see that there's a four-foot measurement between the sidewalk and the edge of the building, and an eight-foot measurement from the sidewalk to the indentation. So I think that we can calculate that it's basically a four-foot indentation, assuming these lines are all accurate, and I think that's a reasonable assumption.
Okay.
So I think four feet should be enough space to allow for at least one, if not two, chairs per side, I'd expect.
Okay.
So how would the condition of approval be added? Do we need to have a motion to add it?
Yeah, when you make the motion, you'll, when you make the motion for the resolution, then you'll make, you'll add, you'll say, add condition number 14, whatever the next number, condition of approval is, and add number, condition 14 stating that the applicant shall provide a drawing of the awning and outdoor seating to be reviewed by the Planning Subcommittee prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Yeah, let me, condition number 14. Okay, so, before I move on to the motion, do any of the commissioners have any further questions or comments they would like to make? Commissioner Sandoval?
No further questions.
Commissioner Lamb Julian?
So, just to clarify, would now be the time to recommend adding the condition for public notice, or during the motion?
You can bring it up for discussion with the under commissioners right now.
Okay.
Now seems like a good time, yeah.
Right, right. Just understanding, the area behind, the residential area on Meadow, in East Meadow, is very congested currently, and the community members there have raised their concerns about the congestion, the current congestion in that area. So I think it would just be a good thing to have, to go ahead and add in this public notice, so then the community members would have an opportunity to really discuss this further, and just be aware that this is happening, since I believe that building has been empty, or just it hasn't had as much foot traffic, and this will be impacting their lives regularly.
Can I, can I add a comment? There's, seems like to be a large apartment complex that's being built on the other side of Meadow Street, and all those contractors are parking their trucks in my current parking lot right now. So I think the neighbors and the residents right behind them are pretty aware of all the noise prior to the construction and everything that's been happening. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware that there's quite a few trucks, and even though I told them not to park there, every time I go there, I have a full, full array of contractors, pickup trucks parked in there.
Yes, I am aware. Thank you.
So I want to be clear on the public notice and what you're expecting, because I mean, we did give, we did send our public notice to over 300 feet, or 500 feet from the area as part of the public hearing tonight. So the residents knew that this item was being heard. So in terms of, because in most cases, building permits are ministerial, we don't send public notices out. What we might be able to do is work with the applicant to either put something, as construction begins, maybe something onsite or saying that construction is beginning now, and, you know, and it'll be something like that. Or are you, are you requesting us to re-notice all the residents within that, within that neighborhood?
I am requesting that the residents be re-notified, because they were not aware, is what they have reached out to me, that they did not receive the notice.
Okay, so if we do send out a notice, it won't be for any, once you make your approval of the project, the approval is done. So the only, the only notice that would be sent to those residents would be to notice that, and we would work with the applicant to see when he would start construction, and then it would be during the construction portion. They wouldn't have any, they wouldn't have the ability to weigh in on, quote, weigh in on the project, that's what needs to happen here. So once you guys do your formal approval, that's, that's the approval of the project. So we can notify them regarding when construction is starting, and how long it's going to take, and that kind of stuff. So that's, I wanted to make sure we understand what, what we're noticing, if, if that's what the desire of the commission.
Understanding that community members did reach out stating that they were not aware that this was happening, and I think it just, in good faith with the community, that we can reissue it and have that transparency with the community, letting them know about when construction is going to happen, so they can be prepared and be proactive about that. They are aware of the other construction vehicles kind of jamming up that whole area as well.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're clear that, that they won't have an opportunity to come in on the project itself. The project is being, being issued tonight. So, you know, that's, I just want to make sure we, we're on the same page of what we need to put in that notice.
Yep. Nope, thank you for the clarification.
So I guess, to follow up on that briefly, Commissioner Lamb Julian, are you asking for this item to be continued?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bender, any final questions or comments?
Just some basic comments. I do think the idea of putting an awning on that north-facing entry is actually a good idea, but I think that intervention should be just simply an awning, but not one of these canvas types, something that is architecturally sort of permanent. But I would keep the overall opening, the framing of the larger opening, it's almost the full height of the building. I would just leave that as is, and it would just be a very simple type of awning. Suspended off, without post, suspended off the building, or supported with a beam going across. But it should be something just very discreet and simple. Because we do get, the winds do come from the northwest, and they would be striking that area, so it would, it would make sense to provide some degree of protection.
Thank you.
And it's, even though it was not on the drawings, I think because of the demolition that is taking place of certain elements, the building is going to be repainted anyway. There was no way you could take old paint and have new paint without it being a mess. And that's my only comments. I do think it's, frankly, I think it's good that this building's been sitting empty for quite a while, is finding a new purpose. And I think that's something positive. Because there's a lot of for-sale commercial buildings here in Pinot that don't seem to be moving. So, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Uch, any final comments or questions?
No further comments.
Commissioner Hui, any final comments or questions?
No, thank you.
And I guess, would this be the time to follow up on the energy requirements of the Cal Green stuff that was mentioned earlier?
I don't know if that was a specific condition you wanted to add, or if you wanted to ask the applicant about his certification with, yeah, Certified Green Businesses?
Yeah, thank you to ever bring it back up. I just did a quick search on the California Green Business Network, and the business is not listed. It could be an error or something to that nature. I would just ask that if we could provide that information, just for educational purposes, I would really appreciate it. Again, you know, I totally understand to the applicant's point, you know, they are accredited, they have their standards, and they're doing everything, you know, by the book, of course. The reason that I bring this up is because we understand that the medical equipment that is used does produce a significant, or use a significant amount of energy, which therefore, further perpetuates greenhouse gas emissions. And of course, this program is free, free of cost, excuse me, free of cost to small and medium-sized businesses. They do provide financial incentive to join the program, and there's a number of technical assistance components that would be beneficial for businesses. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Great. And staffed it for that information to the applicant as well.
All right. In that case, Vice Chair Martinez, any final comments or questions?
Just, thank you, Chair Menes. So on that conditional approval that would go to the Subcommittee, sure, I, I think Commissioner Bender, being an architect, would be the best one to guide us through the recommendation on that. So thank you, Commissioner Bender. I really appreciate your guidance on that. So yes, including in there that we would need to look at additional exterior seating, which the applicant should be able to make those decisions. Adding a trash receptacle on the exterior, the revised exterior painting, and then also including a refresh of tree pruning, and improved landscaping with flowers. Let's dress it up a little bit, because there's a lot of just dirt, and I think we can do a little bit better than that. The example being when we approved the ophthalmology building on Pinot Valley Road, they included a lot of natural grasses and things of that nature that were really quite beautiful, and it really made it just appear a little nicer overall. So anything we can do in that regard would be greatly appreciated as part of that approval process. Thank you.
It seems to me as though a change to the landscaping requirements might be another separate condition of approval, right?
We do have a condition about the maintenance of landscaping, but not...
Number four, yeah. I mean, we, we state that the owner shall ensure trees and landscaping area on site are maintained in good condition, so he would have to refresh whatever landscaping that, because the project had an original landscape requirement as part of the original building, so he would just have to maintain, or read, not say redo, but refresh all the landscaping that was there as part of the original project.
So if you want to add new landscaping to areas that currently have dirt in them or whatever, that would need to be a new condition, right?
That could be a new condition. It could be, I suppose, incorporated into the one for the Subcommittee consideration, including the awnings.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether that would be too broad for one condition or not.
I think it's probably fine.
Okay. And, can I add an additional comment?
Sure.
Chair Menes, thank you. And please understand, I'm not asking for a complete removal of everything, because I think there's some value in the plants that are there that have been there for years. I would also just be okay with putting down some mulch, so that we're not looking at dirt, right? There's the brand-new SAHA project that's going in. The Gables Hotel next to them has spent quite a bit of money improving the look and feel of the area. So I think anything we can do to just tidy it up a little bit might be greatly appreciated. So that's what I'm really looking for. I don't want to rip and replace, I just make it a little bit nicer if possible, please.
All right. And... I think we've addressed all of my concerns, and we've addressed all of the various other concerns of the commission, so... I'll go ahead and make the motion, since this one's going to be a little bit tricky. I move that we adopt Planning Commission Resolution 24-06 with Exhibit A, conditions of approval, including the findings within said condition. And with the addition to the conditions of approval of condition number 14, requiring that an awning and seating be applied to the front sort of alcove area, along with the exterior trash receptacle, and that the areas that are currently just raw dirt be improved either by the addition of mulch or plants, and that all the changes in this matter be brought back to the Planning Commission Ad-Hoc Subcommittee for review before final approval of the building permit, et cetera. Is that roughly a correct way to word the condition?
Yes, that's fine.
And then, do we need to have a second, separate condition number 15 for notice, or is that just understood as part of the construction process?
No, we should, if, if that's what you want, you should add the...
Yeah, that, yeah, that should be added.
...to provide notice prior to the start of construction for properties within the same mailing radius.
All right. So, and also, condition number 15, notice required prior to construction for properties within the standard required notice radius.
Which is 300.
With that notice, also noting that this is not a notice for approval of the project, because that's already been done, just a notice that construction is beginning.
Yes. And just for clarification, the standard notice radius is 300 feet from the property.
All right. And is that everything that needs to be added to the conditions of approval? There isn't anything else that I've missed? All right. In that case, that is the motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion, Chair Menes.
All right. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Appears there is none. So, Mr. Henham, can we have a roll call, folks, please?
Yes. Commissioner Huey?
Yes.
Commissioner Uch?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb Julian?
Yes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Chair Menes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you to the applicants for your time in bringing this project forward. Hopefully, it'll all work out, and it'll be a big boon to the city of Pinot, especially having radiology right across from the urgent care center, right across the way, if I'm reading that map correctly.
Correct. Thank you.
And with that done, we're moving on to old business. We have none. And then, City Planners slash Commissioners' report. So... Mr. Henham, do you have any reports for us?
Yes, I have a couple, a couple of things for you tonight. The first item was, I just let you commissioners know that I attended the American Plan Association Conference. It was a good conference, had a lot of, it was a lot of housing sessions, a lot of ACD sessions, and Objective Development Design Standards session. So it was a good, it was a good learning conference in how to put things together, especially on the Objective Development Designs. So I'll be going over that with the Subcommittee on, on Wednesday. We filed the final map for Pinot Shores 2, so that's now in the hands of the recorder. So that's getting recorded. We are working on getting the MyLARS for the Apian Plaza map, for that, for that map, and finalizing, finalizing the CCNRs and HOA documents, and getting that, that project finalized. We will have an item, the continuation of the conditional use permit for Tina's on the 28th. That'll be coming to you before, before the commission on the 28th. We are working on the housing element implementation for the rezon, or zoning ordinance text amendments. Hopefully, we'll have our next set to you probably in our November meeting, I think is what we were aiming for, right, Justin? Yeah, aiming for that, and hopefully, to get the first set to the council the same month. So, of the first set that you've already approved. So, moving those forward. And then we're also working on the third one, on the third, the third issuance of that. We are also working on, of course, the Parkland Program, putting, putting that project together. So, yeah. So in terms of the development projects, they're all, Vista Woods is getting closer to being completed. They, we did grant temporary occupancy to wings A and B, so you'll probably see people moving in. And we will be, we're in the process of getting inspections done for C and D, and then a full final for the, for the whole project. So, we're working with, with their group and getting, getting that project done. SAHA is moving forward. They'll probably have a final inspection here pretty quickly. They're getting their rooms inspected and that, so that project's been moving very well. We're still working with the project owner on the 2801. owner on the 2801 Pinole Valley Road project. They're working on, they're getting closer, we're getting closer to them submitting stuff. Pinole Shores Two, the building, they looked like they'll be submitting plans by the end of the year. So in terms of building permit plans, we'll hopefully be getting that started. The city, we're also working on development impact fees, which we're at kind of at the tail end of that. And so we'll be getting those moved forward to the council as well. And then we're also working on the safety and environmental justice elements. And so we're looking to get those finalized. I took the comments that the Ad Hoc Committee made and sent them to the consultants. So they're working on those right now. Hopefully, we'll get those done fairly quickly and move forward. And I think that's it. So unless you have any questions on any projects, I'd be happy to answer any questions or, and move forward.
All right. So moving through to the commission, if we have any questions for Mr. Hanam, Commissioner Bender.
Well, no, no questions, but just some items I would like to bring up. I recently went out to Pinole Valley Park, that area, and there was that unfinished trail that goes from roughly the so-called caretaker's house, and it goes over, heads in an easterly direction. And there's been an area where there's a washout. So it's not continuous. But I was kind of surprised because I've been hearing from a couple of people about what's being dumped there. And I was very surprised to see two rather small mounds of fairly recent asphalt that had been dumped there, given the nature of the site. And it also has obviously been used by someone for dumping, you know, broken up asphalt in that area. It's not just road gravel, but broken up asphalt. But seeing the recent dumping of asphalt there, fresh, somewhat fresh asphalt was very surprising, to say the least.
I will check with Commissioner Mishra on that, on what's going on there.
I know that for that particular thing, that's been brought up at the council level, I think, a few times. And what I think Director Mishra said the last time that was brought up was that the intent of the city was to pave that path with the asphalt. I don't know whether that's actually in progress right now or not, though, because I've also noticed those mounds there, what I've observed in that area. And any other comments or questions for the sort of subitem of City Planner/Commissioners' Report? Commissioner Bender?
No.
All right. Commissioner Uch, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Commissioner Huey, any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Sandoval, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Commissioner Liam Julian, any questions or comments?
Is there no update about Safeway?
Safeway. We are, we are, we are meeting with Balboa. We're trying to get with them. Again, we've met with them and they're working, they were working on different things. And so we're hoping that we get something from them shortly. However, I know we're, we're trying to get, meet up with the new city manager in Balboa as well to, to get a meet and greet and to get more information of what they're doing and how they're doing it. So, yeah, but from my understanding is they're continuing to work on their due diligence, on their plans and on their, on their tenant, getting tenants and all that kind of stuff. So they're, so they're moving. We just don't know, we just haven't seen anything yet. So...
Okay. Thank you.
And just to double check on that before I move on to Vice Chair Martinez, when and if they submit new plans, they will not be prevented to put a gas station on that side due to the moratorium, emergency moratorium that's in effect, correct?
That is correct.
Just want to double check and make sure of that. Vice Chair Martinez?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
All right. So over to me. Let's see. I guess one thing I want to follow up on a bit was you mentioned that the city was working on development impact fees. I was under the impression that basically those were completely reviewed and revised back in, I want to say, 2022, as part of what started all these projects starting in the first place, because there was a massive rationalization project, process, which basically normalized out the costs. So there weren't subsidies to, you know, single family users to offset costs to the larger buildings and so on and so forth. Is it, is that whole fee nexus study being done again already?
Yeah. I mean, the, the nexus, I mean, that's the whole, the whole plan is really a nexus study for the approval of the fees. So we had, we had the new, we had to do also, we had, the reason why the fire, the fire section needed to be reviewed again, because now we had Con Fire and not our own city fire department. So that, that added, that added some length of time to it, to get their input and get their review of the, of the program. Also, we needed to, with the changing of the new community services directors, we wanted to make sure that all the facilities and everything were mentioned that were a part of that studies, that were, needed to be involved in that. So there were a couple little hiccups there, but, but most of it is complete. And now it's just a matter of moving it forward, getting it forward here, getting it moved to, moved to the council. So there were some, there were some hiccups along the way between 2022 and now. So...
Okay. Just wanted to clear that up because I was operating the assumption that, you know, everything was done and dealt within 2022, but clearly not.
Well, the master, the master fee schedule was, which is different than the development impact fees. There was that huge, there was a huge thing regarding, and those regarding the fees such as, you know, for conditional use permit app and the building, or, you know, all the, all the service fees that the city provides. So all of that, yes, was done in, in 2022. But the impact fees have been, we've been working on those for the last probably couple of years, solid to get, to make sure that they, they get, they get appro, get updated. Because they're required, they're required to be updated, I think, every five years. And we're a little behind on that. So, but we'll have it, we'll have it hopefully to the council before the end of this year and get it approved. So that's the goal.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Let's see. So just flipping back to the minutes for a bit, double check and follow up on the various points there. Let's see. Were you able to follow up to having a look back at page six of the agenda packet, page two of the minutes? Have you been able to talk with Director Mishra at all about the trail before this meeting?
No, I wasn't able to.
I wasn't able to talk to him about the trail.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to double check on that because it was raised at the last meeting. Let's see. Any other items that were basically stuff we wanted to follow up on? Commissioner Liam Julian?
I just wanted to note that we did discuss the, the sudden appearance of the, the no parking signs at a previous meeting. We were thinking maybe it had to do with, what was it, homecoming, but we didn't get an answer for that. So it is fairly new within the last couple of months.
Yeah, it wasn't, I, I know it wasn't in continuation with, with homecoming because we thought they were, I thought you guys were talking about more portable signs, not the pole signs that actually got in there. That, those are relatively new. So I'm just, I need to follow up with that. But there were, there were signs that were put out as part of the homecoming stuff. There were portable signs that were put out in terms of like Green Day, when Green Day was here. But, but yeah, but I'll, but regarding the poles and the signs, that I'll have to, I'll have to get more info.
Okay.
Let's see. And then on page number nine of the minutes, or page 13 out of 49 of the agenda packet, it notes that the city was working on a grant application with Contra Costa County for sea level assessments and vulnerability assessments. Is there any update on that?
What was that?
So if you look on page number nine of the minutes, under Item J, the City Planner/Commissioners' Report, and the first paragraph, the last sentence, so lines 41 to 43 say, "In addition, the city was working on a grant application with Contra Costa County for sea level assessments and vulnerability assessments."
Oh, yeah. We are working, we're still working with them. We're putting together, they're still putting together the kind of the criteria that we need for the grant. And so we're working with them because it's basically that grant for, it's a sea rise grant, and it's for like the whole shoreline, and we're a portion of that. So we're just trying to find out what, they haven't really determined what our percentage of that will be. So that's what we're working on right now, and the potential of what we can apply for. And if we have projects that we, that we need to, to improve down there.
All right. I think most of my remaining comments fall more under communications rather than Commissioners' Report. So I guess going back briefly, do any Commissioners want to make a report on anything as opposed to replying to Mr. Hanam's comments? All right. In that case, moving on to communications.
Chair, before we move on, I do see a hand raised in the public if we wanted to...
Oh, in that case, yes.
Okay.
A public comment. We want to make sure that the public has the right to, to comment. So...
Sounds good. This is from the caller with the phone number ending in 5748.
All right. Please state your name and city of residence.
Yes, please press star six to unmute when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and city of residence.
My name's Anthony Ross, president, longtime resident of Pinole Valley, over 45 plus years. I had a few follow up questions or response questions with regard to the Adobe Park Trail and Caretaker's House. I don't know if that goes hand in hand with renovating or retrofitting that trail behind the Caretaker's House and Dog Park, which was basically cut in half with a major breach several years ago. And Chief, Fire Chief Coons then was told by the county and/or the state that they needed to repair that breach and trail as well as was mentioned a few weeks ago by one of the public works, workers there pushing around dirt. He said, that's all we're doing now, pushing around dirt. But that, that breach is going to be fixed, just have to be fixed. Is that two separate issues? And why they dump half a dozen truckloads between there and behind the Caretaker's House of similar dirt and rubble? And it's blocking the trail now. So that's basically a fire, public health and safety hazard with two big mounds of pyramids there. Now, do we have to call Con Fire up to get them to clear off the trail and move the stuff to the side like they've done in previously years to build up more little pyramid of, of Egypt dumping and littering that the city has violated their own public municipal code, in Pinole Municipal Code of $500 to $1,000 fine by littering that trail? So I would suggest they get somebody out there this week and clear off the trail to make it walkable. And if a fire truck had to go through there, he's going to have serious problems with the county and/or a lawsuit if half of that valley goes up on either side of that trail up into the El Sabrani Hill Canyon. Also, I would like to ask with regard to the Caretaker's House, there have been several people and several different rumors going around that something is in, in, in the workings with the Caretaker's House, and it has to do with some kind of permitting for certain types of use. So is there a multi-use permit question with that? And, and, and or what is the big holdup or the big secrecy or the big surprise going to be that is, is being withheld from the general public by what is transpiring or in the workings for that Caretaker House? As well as, can you tell us, has the buildout of the trail down by the wastewater treatment plant, the extension of the bayfront water trail, has that been completed or has that been suspended? Because there's no more activity going down there across the creek and bridge like I thought that was part of the original plan to connect that on or around, parallel to the railroad track there, to the north side of the wastewater treatment plant? So what's happening with that project? As well as, there was a, a recent buildout in Hercules with a new business called American Tire Company. Was that ever presented to the city of Pinole to secure that big retail tire chain company to do a buildout, say, in and around somewhere in Pinole, like by Terra Hills, San Pablo Avenue? You know, we have property that maybe could have accommodated them. So they, did they approach us? And, and did that negotiation fall through?
Forty seconds remaining.
Because Hercules got the big contract, they're breaking ground last month in front of the Home Depot parking lot on the side there, and it's all tenanted off. And, and lastly, congratulations to the city of Pinole. They got something right because nobody mentioned how and why they got the $650,000 federal grant or state grant, governmental grant that is supposed to go towards some kind of housing project. So when can we expect to be able to use that money? And what kind of projects is it going to be designated for? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
No, there aren't any other public comments.
All right. So, Mr. Hanam, could you answer any of those questions?
I can try. I'll start with the, I'll start with the Caretaker, Caretaker stuff. Regarding the Caretaker's House, I know Community Service Department and Public Works are working together on particular projects. I'm not quite sure what they are, to be honest with you, but there are projects working between those two departments now that Andrea is on board and, and they're moving forward and trying to get some money to, to take care of the Caretaker's House. And I, I don't know what's the plan, the actual plan is, but I know it's, I know it's part of their park master plan, I think, and, or not part of the park master plan, but there are projects that will, that they're doing. But I'm not quite sure what they are, to be honest. I haven't, I haven't been caretaking, I haven't been caretaking on that. I haven't, I haven't been following that. In terms of the trail, the trail that's already been washed out is still washed out. And the new, the, the materials that are being, and Raphael kind of jogged my memory a little bit because we did have a little bit of a discussion. I don't know the total ins and outs, but that's why that concrete is there. So I don't know the timing of what, of what's going to happen. But because the trail was just a dirt trail for the last, you know, so many years, is that they needed, they needed to pave that into that area. So it's my understanding, I don't know when it's supposed to start or, or that, but I do know that that's why that concrete was stockpiled there. But, but I'll also follow up with Sanjay, and I've got it in my notes to follow up to regarding of when and where and, and the particulars of that project. Regarding the Big O tires, or American Tire, no, we were never approached by American Tire. And so I don't, you know, they, the retail, the retail world, works in the retail world. When they find a spot, they, you know, they're out there combing spots. Not to say that we couldn't accommodate them, we could. There's a number of different places where we could have accommodated them, but they, but they chose to go to Hercules. So, so that, that, and that's the only thing I can tell you about regarding that. In terms of the $650,000 grant, yes, we're working on it right now. We did get a grant for, for the housing, for affordable housing. However, there are some other things that we have to put in place first, such as a public policy fund. And that's kind of where, where we've got to establish that. We're also working on another, another grant application because we have to have, the city has to have certain matching dollars. And so we're working on, on acquiring those matching dollars. We're working with a consultant to, to get those We're working with a consultant to, to get those matching dollars to be able then, then take access to the six hundred and fifty thousand, create the fund. So there's, there's about three or four more steps that, that we have, we, we have to accomplish here fairly shortly to be able to access that money. And then that money will be able to be, be able to be used towards affordable housing projects. We don't have any projects right now where the money is designated at this point. There's no, there's no real plan to, you know, how we're going to do that. So that's all being worked out at this particular point. But yes, we were, that's partly because of the implementation of our housing element, as well as our pro-housing designation that we received. So we were able to, you know, turn that into some real money. So we, that, so that's a real kudos for the city. And so, but we'll, there'll probably be more information coming out on that, on that grant and, and what we, and what we're going to be using the money for, so. But it is for, quote, affordable housing projects. Let's see, I think that was, that was it, right? The trail, Safe Big O or American Tire, okay.
I guess, sort of tying into that, some of the questions about the trail were whether basically having stuff there that would block a fire truck or whatever going through while we were waiting on it being constructed would expose the city to any liability. Is, is that a risk, or is it just, you know, it's not usable, so it wouldn't be usable anyway?
Right. So, yeah, I know, I know we're working on it, we're working, and Confire, I think, is involved in some aspect of it, but I, I'll have to get more information. I'm not too, I'm not quite sure of the, the particulars of the project. So I would have to talk to Sanjay to, to see where they're at and what, what the, what the major, major components of that project are.
But the trail project is being done in cooperation with Confire, they know what's going on.
Yeah. Correct.
Because I think that was basically the root issue, basically, does Confire know what's going on and what would need to happen if they need to move through there or whatever?
Right.
All right. Oh, yeah, there was also a question about the bayfront trail, whether, I think the question was primarily about the repair project that was fixing the area, but it sort of caved into the ocean a bit, but it may also have been about further extension of the trail.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, we haven't, I'll have to check, again, that's, I'll have to check with Public Works. I don't know too much about the Bay Trail. I know that, I think it's B C D C that, that does a lot of stuff with the trail. And I know they're doing, they were looking at potentially doing some work down by where Pinole Shore is due as well. And so, but I'm not quite sure where they're at with all that. That's not a city, that's not, quote, a city trail, that's, that's for the whole area. So I've got, that's another organization that I've got to be able to get aware of, get, get to know and, and see what they're doing down there. I'm not sure.
All right, I think that covers all the various elements of that. So with that, I think we can now move on to communications. So going the other way this time, Commissioner Sandoval, do you have any communications?
No.
Commissioner Lamjulian, do you have any communications?
No.
Commissioner Hui, do you have any communications?
No.
Commissioner Ouch, do you have any communications?
No.
Commissioner Bender, do you have any communications?
No.
Vice Chair Martinez, do you have any communications?
None.
I have some communications. First off, it looks like the city's website still isn't updating properly. I noted that, for example, the city clerks, some of the links from the city clerk stuff is still going back to fix for 2022, for example. But more pertinently, to the planning, commissioning, and community events, a lot of events still aren't showing up on the calendar. And also, the hyperlinks in the Pinole Pulse are still going to four oh four pages rather than the correct PDFs and whatnot on the city's website. So that's something the city should probably look into.
Well, Mr. Chair, I can answer, because that was, I remember you brought that up, and I did talk to Fiona regarding the, the website and the, and the events and that. And that, they are working, they, when the departments enter their, they're supposed to enter their events on their, on their pages, and then they're supposed to be linking to the front page as well. So that's, there's a problem with the link that is going from the department pages to the front pages in terms of events. So that's something that they're working on as well.
Well, I mean, I'm not necessarily talking about stuff populating into the events now page. I'm talking about stuff showing up in the calendar, because there are a lot of things that just aren't showing up properly in the calendar even now, so.
Okay, you're talking about the calendar, okay, I was talking about the, because you had a question regarding it, because they weren't populating the other area as well, so I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
You're, so you're talking about the calendar itself?
Right.
Okay.
And I also had a separate sub-comment regarding the Pinole Pulse and some of the links in there being outdated. Let's see, and so because of that, I have a few items I want to highlight for people. There's going to be the community forum tomorrow at the Senior Center from, I believe, five to seven PM. And there's going to be a blood drive on October thirteenth, which I believe is Sunday, over at Fire Station Seventy-four from ten AM to two PM, though that one did populate into events properly, though I don't think it showed up on the calendar. But just wanted to highlight that for the community to be aware of. Oh, yes, and also the low-income senior food distribution tomorrow from ten to eleven AM as standard on the second Tuesday of the month. That one, I think, made it to the Pinole Pulse, but I don't think it's quite in the calendar yet, so I wanted to make sure that was highlighted. I think that's all for the communications. And with that, our next regular meeting is scheduled for October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM. Does there need to be any change made to that, or is that the next meeting we're going to have? All right, in that case, I will now adjourn tonight's meeting. Good night, everyone.